Last session of the day, I know it is very tiring for many people. But this is not going to be heavy or some technical talks. Our theme for this session is relations of major outreach projects which happened in the last. I we first thought we will do for A size fifty years last fifty years but then we thought that let's do it for the. Post-independence era, what are the major outreach projects which happened? And we invited several people to focus on different areas. I will explain how the decision is such as as the second progresses. So first our first speaker is Ramesh Kapoor, many of you may know him. He is a very senior historian of science. So Ramesh Kapoor is going to talk about. Overall the perspective about outreach in the last seventy-five or so years. So Kapoor ji aapki par, aapko permission diya hai ya you can share your screen?
Thank you. You can see my screen full?
Yes, we can see.
Okay. Thank you very much for this opportunity. The topic, the title of my talk is after a very famous movie, but I think it's relevant here. The heavens in our life, the subject of astronomy fascinates us all. We not only wish to learn more, we also want to share the joy it gives us with one and all. We all carried that germ. Me too and I here I am to share the story of that joy with you. The dream come true when the UPSO offered a research scholarship in June nineteen seventy-one. Doctor S D Simal was the director of those days. In a wonderful campus with telescope houses, there also was this tiny observatory with a six-inch car size equatorial. It catered to the visitors on specific days. It was during the tourist season in May and June, the campus saw them large numbers. Some of us would step into the tiny observatory and love to show the sky and answer their questions. Many a time seeing the twenty-two inch reflector or the hundred-four centimeter size. Now the Sampoona Man Telescope, after it was installed in nineteen seventy-two. Their jaws would drop and some would actually exclaim, science ne itni taraki karli. Conversing with the visitors affirmed the thought that we need to keep telling the people about the cosmos and how we are connected with it lifelong. In March nineteen seventy-four, I joined the Indian Institute of Astrophysics. Doctor M K Venubhu was a great inspiration. He was a bit disappointed seeing me switching over to theory, but he encouraged me. Come September two thousand eight, no reports to write anymore. I became a free bird and an amateur astronomer again. And this is heaven on earth. On the left is the library building. And in the intervening period, whenever there arose a chance or occasion, I too worked to take astronomy to the people. I fulfilled that aim. In the initial days, Dr. J C Bhattacharya was the major force in this matter. I had been involved in this through lectures, articles, TV interviews, exhibitions, correspondence and conversations with students and people. Sharing pictures and literature, the open days, radio talks, filmmaking, meteor showers and eclipse watch as a lone wolf and as a group member. In March nineteen eighty-five, I was assigned the task of developing an astronomy museum at the Kodekanal Observatory and finished it within two weeks. The library, the workshop and the carpentry at Bangalore and almost every section at Kodekanal joined hands and we finished it in time. On display were a few old astronomical instruments from the Madras Observatory times. Astronomical photographs and the pictures of the past astronomers, directors. The entrance opened into a solar section with ill illustrated information. And this is the Mitch Smith Hall where the astronomy museum has come up. And this is one sample of the exhibits. In the compound in a corner, we installed a grating. It was served by a side view stack to form the colorful solar spectrum on a screen at a suitable distance. The astronomy museum was inaugurated by Professor M G K Menon in April nineteen eighty-five. Over the years, it has proved very popular with the visitors to the observatory. As I see in the I I website, it has got a nice facelift. Every twentieth twenty-eighth February since nineteen eighty-six, the National Science Day has been celebrated in the institute with great enthusiasm. Hundreds of students from nearby and outstation schools and colleges accompanied by their teachers. Visit the campus are given popular lectures, a quiz and are shown around the campus, the optics lab etc. Also shown are short films to communicate the important achievements in astronomy. On display would be a demonstration model of the indigenous two-point-three-four M Venubhupu telescope. The public response has always been very encouraging as you can see it here. And during the ninety-sixth Indian Science Congress in Shillong, we had installed there. I gifted demonstration models of the two-point-three-four Venubhupu telescopes to the physics department, Punjabi University. And the Jawarlal Nehru Planetaryium, Bengaluru. A seven-point-five centimeter reflector was gifted to the then astronomy association of the regional engineering college Allahabad. Now the Motilal Nehru National Institute of Technology Allahabad Prajraj. In nineteen ninety-eight, the institute proposed and got a tableau created on behalf of the Ministry of Science and Technology. For the Republic Day parade on nine twenty-sixth January nineteen ninety-nine. The theme depicted the evolution of observational astronomy in the last millennium from temples to modern telescopes in India. We showcase the replica of the twelve zodiacal pillars of the Shringiri Temple. A model of Maharaja Sawajay Singh's Vedchala and a scale model of the upcoming two-meter optical telescope since named the Himalayan Chandra Telescope. And here is just one view. Ten years later, I created another tableau to be featured in the Republic Day parade of twenty-sixth January two thousand nine on behalf of the D S T. The tableau highlighted the present scenario in astronomy in India. It displayed models of the. V B T building and of a radio interferometric telescope to represent the G M R T along with a running slideshow of the astronomical images. Here is an image of that. Transits of planets across the disk of the sun are among the most fascinating phenomena in solar system. At I I we organized public viewing of the transits of Mercury on sixth November nineteen ninety-three and on seventh May two thousand three. Here is a view. I hope you can see the tiny dot near the center of the image of the sun. We are among the fortunate ones to have lived and experienced the transits of Venus on eighth June two thousand four and on sixth June two thousand twelve. The transits gave rise to a widespread excitement and scientific activity of great magnitude. The I I campuses and the observatories placed themselves for the observations and public viewing. And here is one view of that in on the slightly right of the center are silostats. And on the left is a tent where the image of the sun was directed. And this is the reaction of the newspapers. And in the two thousand twelve transit of Venus, we did the same arrangement and this is an image of that. And we have also done a few new brochures of I I and including the Himalayan Chandra Telescope. We also celebrated Indian International Year of Physics two thousand and five. So we made a we developed a plaque and a calendar and calendar had images taken by Sura Ravindranath at the Venubhupu Observatory. And we also developed greeting cards and this is two thousand one X N G C five-two-nine-one. Taken in March two thousand one with the Himalayan Chandra Telescope. We did two films in sixteen M format on the observatories and on the nineteen eighty solar eclipse expedition to Jaugira in Karnataka. The films were later transferred to the V H S format with commentaries by doctors. M K Venubhupu and J C Bhattacharya, these are played at Vighyanbhan New Delhi during the I I U General Assembly in November nineteen eighty-five. The films have some rare footage of S Chandshaker and Humi Bhava. By then visit to the Kodeikanal Observatory in nineteen sixty-one and nineteen sixty-four respectively. This is a screenshot from that film and I library doesn't have an image of this. And there is no better location than an eclipse for outreach. The solar eclipse of sixteen February nineteen eighty was a great awakening post-independence. This was an unprecedented excitement among people from all walks of life. The later eclipses were no less exciting. Here are a few images from the I I camps of the eclipses of nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety-five and two thousand nine. And this is image of the tall seventy-feet steel tower which you can see here. And in front you can see the strength of the tents. And this is Doctor Venubhupu taking a morning view of the entire camp. And at at the bottom of the that tower, there was a their observatory for the flash spectrum they wanted to take. And this is the result of the Husur ten observations and. And after the eclipse was over, there was great excitement to talk about how people have felt about it. Here you see Doctor Venubhupu, Professor Rajesh Koshar and Doctor J C Bhattacharya extreme right. And this is a view of the Neemkathana camp of I I during the eclipse of twenty-four October nineteen ninety-five. And there also we reached out. So I gifted a seven-point-seven-five-centimeter reflector to G N Modi Higher Secondary School Neemkathana. In their ground, we had the camp and that was done after the great Indian eclipse on twenty-four October nineteen ninety-five. And in on during the eclipse of twenty-two July two thousand nine at Varanasi. Doctor Deedi was our host and here in the image you can see Doctor Devi Prasad Chaudhary. On extreme left. I was in modeling the inclusion of footage on the Venubhupu Observatory in a film by the Ministry of Human Resources and Development. On the wings of science covering fifty years of Indian science because telecast by Dur Darshan in August nineteen ninety-eight. In two thousand six-seven, again I participated in the making of film on I I. And for astronomical observations, a telescope device was used in India in sixteen eighteen within a decade of its invention. This is to celebrate four hundred years of the telescope in India. So this is connected with the tale of two great comets of November sixteen eighteen that were observed also from India by the Mughal Emperor Jahagir. And independently by the Jesuit father Kirvitzer who used the telescope to view these from Goa. So not Gujarat.
Two two minutes.
Okay, sure. I'm coming to the end. So with A S I and the Association of Friends of Astronomy at Goa, there was celebration of the four-hundredth anniversary of the telescope in India. And the on eleven November two thousand eighteen at the Marina Beach in Panaji. The public viewing of the sky was organized by the A F A and here you can see Doctor Sri also in the image. So I have been writing articles for newspapers. Sometimes I. I interviewed on the new the channels also. So thank you.
Thank you.
Acknowledgements I must.
Any questions on the audience? Actually, before I ask anyone, I had a question. So you showed these two tabloids which were in the Republic Day parade. Are these the only two instances of astronomy featuring in the Republic Day parade?
Yeah, as far as I remember, yes.
Okay, we'll I will come back to you after all the talks in the open session. Let's go to the next speaker. Our next speaker is. B S sorry Priya Hassan, who will talk about outreach from the university sector. Priya, Kabul, if you can stop sharing then please start.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Just a minute. I hope you can see my slide. Is my slide clear?
We can we can see that.
Yeah. So thanks, Aniketh, and thanks, Professor Kapoor, for starting off the talk on astronomy outreach. And thanks, I'd be talking now about astronomy outreach basically from the university sector and some of the issues. So what you can see on the right over here is this is at Ragapur Observatory, which is close to Hyderabad. There's a terrace where we were having a public viewing session. Here you can see the the telescope of Delhi University again at the terrace. And I'll talk about some of the work being done by universities. So just as a just to as a short history thing. Again, it starts off with Calcutta, the first, when did astronomy start in universities in India? It has a very, you know, old history since a long time, much before any of the institutes started. So you had Presidency College in eighteen seventeen which started off with Astro and which is now Presidency University. Calcutta University already started it in eighteen fifty-seven, Allahabad University in eighteen eighty-seven, B H U in nineteen sixteen. And then the Nazami Observatory here in Hyderabad was started in nineteen oh one and Usmania University in nineteen seventeen. Delhi University not to, I mean quite soon after that, which is nineteen twenty-two. So you can see we have quite a, you know, good history of astronomy in universities. And if you just check what about the teaching of astronomy in universities? So Usmania University for a very long time is been the only university in the country which has a master's course in astronomy as well as in astrophysics. They're two different streams. And otherwise, in most universities, astronomy is just part of the M S E physics course. Where you have astronomy as an elective paper, one or two courses per semester which includes things like sun and solar systems, stellar galactic, extragalactic. G R cosmology etc. And some of these universities also have set up labs and practical courses. You know, on binary stars, on proper motion. In Raipur, for example, they use simulated lab, clear thing, there are some virtual lab things. Some of them do have telescopes of their own. So with that, they do conduct some kind of, you know, lab activities where people actually do some observations. And so now if you actually check the list, this is not an exhaustive list, but essentially the list of universities which have astronomy courses. I'd start with the Swan University, then you have Nandir which has it, Tejpur, Cozenkerry, Raipur, University of Delhi, Kochi, Calcutta. Or Kolkata, Silchar, Kottayam, Gorakhpur University, Udayapur, Pune, Srinagar, Jadavpur, Kalikat. North Bengal, Siligori, Ponticherry, Tirupati and a whole bunch of other universities which have started astronomy courses as part of their physics courses. Though Usmane University is the only one which still has a dedicated astro department, just an astro department. Now, what are the basic challenges? I'm speaking from on behalf of universities. What are the basic challenges that are faced by universities in doing outreach work? So the first biggest problem is the lack of special staff dedicated for outreach, right? In the university, you do not have anybody who's specifically employed to do outreach. Everybody obviously has to do their teaching and research and outreach is part of the additional things they would do. Other than that, obviously, we have a good amount of a teaching load. The official U G C requirement is sixteen hours for assistant professors per week. And often assistant professors, like even me, I often teach often more than sixteen hours per week depending on requirement. And then the other issue being lack of funds specifically for outreach. So actually, to be on a fair ground, what I did is for this talk, I set up a Google form which I shared through Ayuka, through A S I as well as through my social media platforms. To actually request universities and colleges to tell me about the outreach activity they do. So that I don't miss out on universities because often there could be universities who are, you know, actively doing work but are not mentioned. And therefore, what we were focusing on was what are the kind of science outreach activities these universities do? And do they actually collaborate with individuals, universities on institutes for these activities? What has been the impact of these activities? And what support would they like from the astronomy community in these activities and obviously any other comments? So I have about twenty-one entries which I have. So the rest of my talk will be based on the input I got from the twenty-one entries. So the typical outreach education activities done by universities is obviously that's for general public. They often have annual exhibitions, science day programs, stargazing programs. Usmane University has a foundation course since twenty seventeen. They also conduct meteor shower observations which are sent to the I M O asteroid hunt. Programs, solstice days, some of them also host astro clubs in which students even from other departments as well as from the city can join them. Some of them do work with schools and often it is event-based. So you know, you could do it on say the twenty nineteen solar eclipse or the lunar eclipse, zero shadow days, workshops for school teachers. There's been lots of work even with even in our university in Maulana Azad, we've been doing with Professor Deshpande on this one antenna. We had students who went for training. And then for their own students, they have their annual seminars as well as some of the students can go and volunteer say at Ayuka, N C R A or any of the other institutes. And come back, learn some software, do some projects, U G P G too. And some interesting ones is for example, Gorakhpur University had done one in twenty seventeen, that was the year when D S T had put Science Day. The theme was science and technology for specially-abled and they centered it around Stephen Hawking to increase awareness as well as, you know. Importance of that, some of them do have Ask Us Podcast events, school visits, science centers. Good example of G M R T though it doesn't fall into universities, but since Divya gave me this feedback is that they have, you know, done a lot of work in the two hundred thirty-one villages in that area. Where you could have weekly slots where students visit the G M R T as well as see the telescope and do various things. Some of them are based on events like Man on Moon, Apollo, E H D etc. Now what we have been doing is specifically, I'll now talk a little bit about the pandemic. During the pandemic, we we work as a team, me and S N Hassan. So what we did is with O A D with the astronomy for development office, we actually had two projects. One is astronomy for archival data and one is Astro Sprint which is still a not growing project. And you can see in this the kind of coverage which you got worldwide because it was online so people could join from anywhere and we had a very good coverage of people. And what we basically did is we did virtual teaching via online Zoom sessions. We had to develop the website, maintain it, social media through Telegram, email. There was, we had a variety of speakers, obviously not just us, but we had Mark Taylor who's done Top Cat, Luisa Ribul from I P A C, Bruno Meren from I S A. Deborah Behens is also from I S A. We have Tim Hamilton, Ajit Kimbhaavi, Avinash Deshpande, Sushant Konar. So we had a whole set of speakers who also helped us in building the thing so that, you know, we could cover broader set of topics and things like that. And we also taught students tools which were things like Python, Astro Py, Top Cat, Neo Tools. And they used Gaia data, S D S S data, Kepler data, magnetar spalsar data, galaxy morphology, H S T data etc. To actually study certain science cases. So the first phase was where we actually had these Zoom sessions for four months from August to November. And after that, people chose their projects, they went in for and after that, they presented their projects in February. So we had about thousand students from twenty-five countries all over the world who were participating. There are about eighty videos already online available and there's still a lot of active participation. As a sequel to this, we have workshops, enterprise discovery, next generation. And now our YouTube website has a whole bunch of all these videos. Along with that, we could do a lot of other sessions, for example, for Zero Shadow Day, for International Day of Light, for observing with remote telescopes. This is at the Las Cumbres Observatory. For highlighting citizen science projects, we had ten sessions on that. We had a big data workshop and we had various popular talks from various people which covered that. And now since I'm co-chair for Women in Astronomy, I U, so we even have training programs for women in I I U along with panel discussions. So in principle, there is a lot that universities actually can do and do do and like especially like I even mentioned at the pandemic also. They actually did a big this thing, but based on what people told me, here is my list of wish list. Obviously, the first thing is funding. Funding is good to have. The other thing is support from the astronomy community, I I Uka, A S I, P O S C. So what they would like is something like a year-long planning of events. If you'd had a database of events where you describe events, suggestions for observations, possible pamphlets, experimental activities. Some kind of experts who can deliver deliver a series of lectures on that, networking and communication at the national level. So that, you know, everybody can access things. Some of them would like telescopes, basic models, some kind of resources, experts, training, right? Some funding and then some of them you would like interaction with scientists because often the university's rooms do not know what they can do. They would like some kind of interaction. So even if it's not offline, at least it can be online. And I mean, part of this is also my ideas, but so A S I L S C P O S C should, there's been lots of appreciation about what. P O S C has been doing during the A S I meetings of having talks in the local area near each A S I meeting as well as especially when it is in smaller cities. And P O S C can actually act as the agency for identifying interesting material for outreach and its use network, get it translated like they've already been doing that. And this database can be accessed by people to actually plan their events because many of them do not know what are the events they can do and. So now this has some.
Last two minutes.
Yeah, yeah. So this is some of my last possible suggestions of possible action for Ayuka, A S I. This could also be from the mega projects, outreach offices if they have funding as well as C S R help. So obviously, can material be loaned to them with resources with their active webpages where they can get the data? Like I said, database of experts, events, things like that. P O S C social media handle should cover all outreach activities of A S I members and universities, not just P O S C. Exposure camps have been appreciated. Another thing is associate membership is being soon hopefully offered to planetary area. And probably it can also be offered to faculty or students interested in astronomy without publications as associate members, networking of this group and funding and assistance. And I would like to finally end with this with this final note of mine is that universities essentially is where our country, the masses of our country. They get educated in universities and therefore for science and astronomy to be in our social temper. We have to obviously work at university level because that's where we are going to get the maximum reach to our people. And we can actually get the maximum effect, right? So thanks, I'll end with that. Yeah, thanks, Aniketh.
Priya. One question from my side, you mentioned Usmania has been active and operating M S E course for very long. So were there any major outreach campaigns run by Usmane University Department?
Yeah, so actually, some of those pictures which were there are are from Usmania only. I didn't have the time to do it, but they have been doing the regular, like I said, the foundation course they do. They do visits to the observatory, then even event-based things in the sense when there's an eclipse, solar eclipse, lunar eclipse. Zero shadow days, things like that. They've been doing that, yeah.
At present, but historically.
So as I know, historically, they did a lot at Halley's Comet. Probably Professor Kapoor will know better. But I think nineteen eighty-six, that's when they had done a lot for Halley's Comet. Unfortunately, I was not there at that time and I could not find material on that. But yes, they did do that, but they did have the issue of the problem of teaching load. So there was obviously limitation to how much of outreach they could do. But yeah, Professor Kapoor would know about Halley's Comet eighty-six. I think they did a lot at that time.
Any other question? If no, then we'll go to the next speaker. Next speaker is. Doctor B S Shalija, you know her, she was with Benos Lantim Erliyan and she's going to talk about outreach by the planetary. Shalija, you can share your screen.
Yeah, thank you. I hope you can see my screen. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So I first of all thank P O S C for giving me this opportunity to talk about the planetariums and the outreach activities. And it gives me of course great pleasure because I have served in the planetarium for more than two decades. Making outreach possible in all possible modes. So fifty years ago, of course, I was asked to talk about how it has evolved in the last fifty years. So our opening balance was just one. There was only one planetarium at Calcutta. And by virtue of its position adjacent to the famous Victoria Memorial, I think it attracted lot of tourists. And I whoever went to Calcutta made it a point to visit the planetarium. And thrill was seeing the familiar names like Aries and Taurus in the sky. It was just limited to that those days, I think. And all the shows were live. I suppose you people can catch what I mean by live. Because now if you go to any planetarium, you will see the recorded shows. Those days they were live and. It continued to be so. So fifty years is a long period so that people have decided to write a history of the planetariums in India. So I can see a report published in the Indian Journal of History of Science. So it suffices to say that about the evolution of planetarium history. But now I'll concentrate more on the. But now I'll concentrate more on the show production and other outreach activities that have evolved. With this number of planetariums increasing all over India. So shows and other means of outreach. The target has been always the school children, school children. Because as part of school education, they were brought to the planetarium. Even today, many people think that planetariums are meant only for school children unfortunately. And very rarely we see adults coming for a time pass, but it's good that families have started coming to the planetarium. When the excuse of showing it to the children. So the pioneering efforts I should point to Delhi because they made use of the opportunity of so many schools visiting. And came up with many programs there. I should remember here Colonel Singh and Dr. Nerupama Ragavan. Who initiated many activities for the school children. Making them enjoy astronomy and involve them in looking at the sky. Observing celestial events and so on. In fact, that trend has continued even today. And we also have to remember Dr. Ratneshi at this moment. And all other planetariums which have come up later also have picked up this thread. And we have come up with various activities for school children in all planetariums. I'll be able to give only a glimpse of that. And that Baroda and Jaipur, Dr. Ajay Kulikarni also had taken some active role. Dr. Gopalswami at Chennai. And I had heard that Dr. Devdas, whose name we have known as a telescope manufacturer. Also had a lot of activities for children in the early days of his telescope making workshops. And this way, they catered to so many age groups, not small children, but. Even college students up to the level of college students. So another important thing that automatically happened in this process was. That planetarium started sheltering amateurs. So amateur astronomers joined hands with the planetariums for all outreach activities. And even introducing telescopes to kids. And Colonel Singh, I should remember because he introduced the Olympians and the children trained by him. Back the first ever gold medal and silver medal for astronomy Olympians. I, I remember that subsequently he had come to Bangalore Planetarium with Soma Krichandra and Fush Pandey. We had a small informal meeting there as to how this can be transferred to all over the country. Through the planetariums and I think we prepared a question bank and conducted. The exam for a few years and so on. But subsequently, whom I爸爸sent it took it over because the number of students was simply unmanageable for the small planetariums. Fifty years ago, who was the authority to speak about celestial events? That is a very interesting thing, it was the positional astronomy center in Kolkata, which was under the department of meteorology. So in a small note that you would see in the newspapers would be from them giving the timings of the eclipses especially. Solar and lunar, any other celestial event, there were, nobody was ever bothering about it. And I don't think the newspapers really cared to publish them. But subsequently, a miracle happened, that was in the year in nineteen eighty when astrologers took over the responsibility. And some of you may remember that particularly on the day of the nineteen eighty eclipse. The whole country was under a curfew, which was worse than the lockdown situation we had two years ago. Ramesh Kapoor presented the positive side of it because only a small percentage of the enthusiasts visited the eclipse camp. But the rest of the country was under curfew with all flights cancelled or trains cancelled. Fortunately now, we have a turning point and that is whenever there is a celestial event. They all call it the planetarium. Not, they don't go to the astrologers anymore and that's a positive note that I should. Because it could be an eclipse, it could be a planetary conjunction, it could be an asteroid coming down. Or it could be even the launch of a satellite by Isro. They all call the planetarium to get to know the details. I think this is a positive development that we have to appreciate. And one of the things Nehru Planetarium did in nineteen eighty-five was to invite the delegates of the I A U. To visit, I think that was the first time I, even I visited a planetarium. And I just did not know what was happening and it was a nice forty minutes. Event that we had there. And I never knew that I would be back in the planetarium much later. Otherwise I'd have taken care to see further details there, but Nerupama was great. She explained everything later when I met her. And I felt bad that in nineteen eighty-five, I did not take that much of interest in knowing about the planetarium. This is the projector which creates that marvel of the night sky which reproduces. I chose this particular picture because this is the first generation equipment that all the planetariums in India had. Say fifteen years ago, even this one is not working in our campus anymore. This was the day before we dismantled it to make way for the new system of projector, digital projectors. So I have to mention about Professor Vishweshwar also because I'm going to talk about the show production and other things. Which is very vital in attracting students to the planetarium. So the challenge is the range of visitors. We have dignitaries like Professor Yes Chandra Shekhar coming and watching the show. And the other dignitary I have shown here, I don't have to mention the name, all of you can recognize him. I had to mention the name of Chandrashaker because some of you may not be able to recognize him at all. And not just the school children, even these people have started coming now, so we have to cater to their needs. So the script has to be very powerful so that we cater to all levels of visitors. The first challenge all the planetariums had, whether it is, it was Nirukumar, Vishveshwara or whoever. Started the first work at the planetarium was mastering that equipment which recreates the sky so well. How to make use of the best from that. And therefore scripting issue was very important. And more important was creating the visuals, we did not have any digital support, the only support we had are slide projectors. And it is at this context I want to recall the live shows in Kolkata Planetarium which was going on till say. Two thousand sixteen or so. I happened to be there in two thousand sixteen or two years before that, I think. I was surprised by the show that was being given by a lady, I unfortunately have forgotten her name. She was giving a live show, she had the numbers for distances to planets, diameters of the planets, both in kilometers and miles. By heart and she was managing the slide projector with hand. Because it's a circular seating arrangement and she had to turn it by one eighty degrees so that everybody could see the slide. And that she was managing simultaneously talking without letting people know that she was doing all the things by herself. I was amazed because I also had given live shows later or earlier for twenty years, twenty-five years. But I had this wonderful projector at my disposal which could show eclipses, which could show comets. And the other things and then I didn't have to move the slide projector myself. So I really appreciate the effort of those people. Who have now made way for digital projectors in the last two years even in Kolkata. So the efforts to reach all levels, as I mentioned, we need to have very good visuals, animations and movies. That is when we had to go to the institute like I A A to borrow visuals from them. And we have to have a local touch for all the scripts because we cannot show mythology from some Sumerian country or whatever. And music of course has to be Indian and only then it goes, it will be appreciated by the people. So it's here that Professor Vishweshwar exploited the local talent. I will give you two examples of the local talent. All right, this was a special program we had organized under the stars on thirty-first December nineteen ninety-nine. Under the planetarium sky, a beautiful music program. And those who attended this program perhaps still remember the melody and the beautiful night sky they had above their head at that. Yeah, so these are some examples of the local talent I was mentioning. And then we moved from slide projectors to video projectors. So we had to have annu dates etc. And of course, we have beautiful exhibition halls and science park, which was barren like this. Became like this, this was also a new idea which was initiated by Professor Vishveshwara and which was subsequently. Used by other planetariums also wherever they had place to do this. And then we came up with many educational activities, projects for postgraduates, even Kolkata, Chennai and Delhi. Had started this program, but Vishweshwar came up with this wonderful idea called the See It So and Read Program. Science in early education, science over weekends for high school children and rape for college students. So this is his idea and this program, the program, perhaps you all know. Some of the beneficiaries may be already sitting there, it produced very good teachers, very good researchers and even good journalists. There are some science journals who have been trained in this program and they have produced very good science reports. And these were the three people who started the program. Ninety-five, ninety-six and the astronomy astrophysics part was taught by me. And then we have several outreach activities which are being continued forward. With the new digital setup, we are able to do many more things. And we are able to reach this and I, I can't help mentioning Dr. Ratneshi and her enthusiasm to make it. To the other planetariums in the North Indian Hindi Belt, I should say, because the language is very important here. So the other outreach activities, demonstration models which we have, we have made some fifty models which are lent to schools. They show it in their schools and several lakhs of children visit them. And this is another one and then the science park, concept of science park is now going into all schools also. And the celestial events we have used as avenues for education like the eclipses, total, partial or annular. And of course, the transit of Venus in two thousand four and two thousand twelve, we had a very grand reception for that. And this I want to mention about the instruction in the curriculum of the state board. This we were, myself and Madhusu, then we were both in the state board committee. And we had introduced eight standard, nine standard and ten standard. But then we had lot of teacher workshops to.
How, how many more slides?
One more slide, one more slide. So now it is withdrawn, so now there is no, no, no astronomy covered in this. And therefore, I feel that ASI should do something about it. I think it should be introduced in the school curriculum. And nowadays we generate shows with this digital thing, so I don't have to tell much about it. And with so many planetariums spread across the country, there is lot of scope for reaching out to rural areas. And so let's, there is lot of things to be done, ASI can take a lead here and can fill the gaps here. And try to achieve something to make it reach public. So that they are the new challenges, we have to rival with the commercial cinema people, the production cast and other things. And then remember to add local flavors, so that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Shalija, you mentioned celebrities visiting the landryam to attend the shows. But I know at least one story where celebrities helped the landryam design the shows where. At the post-show of Mumbai Landryam, the commentary was given by Professor S. Chitraye. And Dilip Kumar was voice coach for him for that commentary.
So the, the problem with the mobile planetariums is that the space available is so small. That the children remember more of the uncomfortable feeling they had inside the dome rather than enjoying the visuals. This is unfortunately the feedback that we got and so I generally don't encourage a mobile planetarium. It's a very small tent and gets heated up very fast.
Okay, thank you, Shalija, we will go to the fourth speaker. Our next speaker is Arvin Paran Spain and he is going to talk about pre-POC outreach by ASI members. Arvin?
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I need to share my screen, so let me do that, actually I don't really. Just here, can you see my screen?
Yes, it is, it will appear, yes, oh, we can see your screen.
Okay, fine. Once, I have an issue right now here. Okay, so basically, I, what I wanted to talk to you about is the ASI outreach. Particularly talking about the amateur astronomers. So let me begin by saying that the amateur astronomy activity in the country really got the boost. After the total solar eclipse or around the total solar eclipse of fifteen, sixteen February nineteen eighty. And at that time, Indian Institute of Astrophysics had published this booklet called The Day of the Dark Sun, I think that was its name. And that became very important for one simple reason that it was the eclipse took place when the skies across the country were very. Expected to be clear and remain clear. It was a very long eclipse, three minutes or so, then it was near solar maximum, so the corona was well distributed. And the totality tracked past the major cities like Hyderabad and Kolkata and etc. Except that Durdarsan and Akashwani played this spoilsport and then warn, warn people against the. One against the observing the totals of the eclipses. Okay, what would now, what follows is my account of outreach by ASI.
Arvin, are you, are you in the slide presentation mode because the slides are not moving?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I have only one or two slides, most of it is I'm just talking about.
Okay.
Okay, so whenever there is a slide, I will click on that.
Okay, fine.
Okay, so now in nineteen seventy-nine, I was in my final year of B S in Bangalore. And I was also member of Association of Bangalore Amateur Astronomers. So in addition to publishing booklet at that time, I astronomers mainly Bappu, Bhattacharya, Kapoor, Shivraman, Kiar Shivraman. Wrote lot of popular like articles as well as gave talks. And we members of Amateur Astronomy Association would actually go and attend almost all the talks. Of course, at that time, there were these three magazines, that is the Science Today. Which was Times of India publication and then Science, Science Age, which was published from Nehru Center, which is closed after some time. And then Science Reporter which continues, so all these magazines had special issues. And what these special issues held, underlined thing was that solar corona can be, is a polarized thing. And that caught our attention, amateur astronomers in Bangalore that had caught our attention. And we thought that we could photograph the solar corona in polarized light. Now where to get the polaroid sheet and that's where Indian Institute of Astrophysics came to help us. And Dr. Shivraman suggested that I may write to Arvin Bhatnagar, Dr. Arvin Bhatnagar at the Udehpur Solar Observatory. Actually at that point in time, it was called Vechala. And immediately by written post, he sent us two sheets of two inches by two inches of polaroid sheets. And we'd used those sheets and we had a wonderful camp. Actually, one of the persons in our group decided to do an experiment on the electron density in the corona. And these people, if I remember, some of you might know two people from our group and one is the Arjun Day. One is Arjun Day at N A, N O A and Madan Rao, who is at the Central National Centre for Biological Sciences. So we all went to a place nearby, we digged up a tent and did this experiments, travel our eclipse experiments. Madan Rao's experiment was little too ambitious, but the color solar corona came in. And ASI allowed me to present a paper on our experiments during the nineteen eighty-one Jallbodi meeting at Ahmedabad. At that time, I was offered four hundred rupees for travel and registration, registration was waived. But since I had to be member of ASI to receive that money, so I was first made member by deducting the joining and membership fee. Well, that membership sort of, I believe it makes me possibly not the youngest. But at least one of the youngest non-astronomer member of the ASI. The point that I'm trying to make here is that even then, ASI was supporting activities by amateur astronomers and that is nearly forty years ago. Now, soon after nineteen eighty solar eclipse, Venuppu invited many astronomers to discuss upcoming high altitude. Uh high altitude observatory in Ladakh and that time he judiciously invited amateur astronomers to participate. And try to see if these people get volunteer. Now from Bangalore, if you move to about eight hundred or so kilometers northwest. Then we know that Professor Jant Narlikar has been doing a wonderful outreach activities. It was a pan-India effort and then he now got this Kal Sagans Cosmos. In a to India through Dur Darshan and it was a very popular thing. And that generated large amount of, a large number of amateur astronomers. Later on, when he initiated Ayuka, the public outreach became one of its main activities. But before I go to Ayuka, let me also tell you about few individuals who did as a member of ASI. Did some activities. One is that father and son team, that is BBS Rao and his son BSC Rao. Both of them did a good lot of amateur telescope making and active amateur telescope making activities in Bangalore and Madras. And BSC Rao also was instrumental in starting the Bangalore Association. Now, the tenth of March seventy-seven, we had this uh occultation of a star by Uranus. And the rings of Uranus were discovered and which was a major talk of the town and Professor Bhattacharya had given a talk. And naturally amateur astronomers in Bangalore, we got into observing occultations. At the same time, at VITM, VITM has had given us a room amateur astronomers. And what Shalaja had just talked about, that is where we used to make actually telescope. Now, around this time, I had joined Indian Institute of Astrophysics in their photographic lab. My boss was Jagdev Singh. And now he allowed me to make prints for the exhibition of amateur astronomers and. Now let me just share this slide. Okay, so this is the exhibition and then here is this occultation equipment which we have managed to actually put together. To try to record but that that never worked but it was a good good effort on our part, I mean I would say. Uh as an amateur astronomer now looking back in time. Another person I would like to mention here is that one Shakuntala Nene from Rajkot, she was an NCC instructor, never married. And she actually initiated good lot of amateur activity in Rajkot. Then Professor Devdas's name has been taken earlier and he was a great telescope maker. Uh made his Newtonian telescope and what was great about him is that many a times he went out of his way to help people. Then in Mumbai, Raju Patel, again a member of ASI, was groomed by Arvind Bhatnagar in telescope making. And he installed a good silostat at Nehru Planetarium about exactly forty years ago and which is still functional. And another person which I would like to take, remind people is that Ajay Talwar, who trained himself as a astrophotographer. And has been doing wonderful, making some wonderful pictures. Now there are far too many people to take names, so I won't go into that, but go back to Bangalore and what Kapur has said. About the museum, I would like to tell you that the museum, we were invited, the junior members of staff of I A. Were invited to go and man the museum at that time and I was very happy to go to the museum because our work would start at ten o'clock. Get over by one o'clock, have a lunch, go down to Korikana Lake for doing boating. Come back and then take a little nap and then go and observe Korikana. I had a beautiful sight and the telescope was at my disposal, so I could observe. Now, one of the slides which are shown by people is that the three inch telescope, which was made by CSIO. That is Scientific Instruments Organisation, Chandigarh and it was developed in collaboration with Indian Institute of Astrophysics. It was a beautiful refracting telescope mounted on a equatorial mount with slow motion knob. And this telescope was used by large number of people, except that uh sorry, it was distributed to large number of institutions across the country. Except that these telescope boxes were never opened by majority of them. I have seen some boxes to go into village schools and see and the reason that was given is. That if you open and something goes wrong, I will have to pay for it, so the boxes were just lying there. Another activity which I A A supported and later on helped me also. And that is, we started teaching people how to make telescopes. We used to have in VITM telescope making workshop. And large number of people came and made their mirrors, they grounded polished figure their mirrors. And Indian Institute of Astrophysics helped us in aluminating the mirror. So one of us would take the telescope, the completed figured mirror to Kaulur, get it, aluminize and bring it back. Now I shift to Ayuka in nineteen ninety-one where I joined, started working with Shamtandan. And we built a low-cost solid-state photometer for amateur astronomers. By the way, the first prototype that was made and tested by two amateur astronomers and I'm sure you know of them. At least one person is here right now in the audience is Yoke Swardhika and Niranjan Samboos. So this particular night sky photometer we developed and a large number of people had used this photometer. Then uh.
Uh two minutes.
Okay, so now I will come down to one particular instance of talking about how. Uh Ayuka has had help and that is, we also had supported amateur astronomers. Which is one Nilesh Punthambika who made the studio stat working on. Parag Devtare made liquid mirror telescope and pointed it out to you, this Trukti Ranka, she got the Yam best pre PhD entry. She observed with us the forty-four booties, which is a short period, it's a variable start. Now, what I would like to actually end, end here is that some of the things which we talk very regularly. And that is the zero shadow day. The zero shadow day has been a zero shadow day is a completely my creation. And I would like to put this on record today and I would like to give you a little history of that and the history is that. Uh in uh two thousand eight, I was teaching a group of students, the school students. About the solar system and we realized that on fourteenth of May two thousand eight. The declination of sun would equal the latitude of Pune and this is how we actually demonstrated the complete circular shadow. And next year, which was International Year of Astronomy, so I made this uh. Uh papers really, we thought of talking about it many, give this particular event many names. But finally, like day with no shadow and shadow lost day or something like that, but zero shadow day stuck on. So I'm just telling all of you that whenever you talk, please remember that this is completely Indian concept. There there has been no other such activity elsewhere in the world and please do remember that this this concept had evolved. In this century at Ayuka and it would be nice if you can, if you can continue to give credit to me. Lastly, I must admit that at Ayuka and now at Mumbai, we do have once in a while gender inequality. We have to say that as we say in amateur wireless operator lingo, that we have more wires than OM. Uh we always say that irrespective of their gender, okay, sorry. We always say that females are young ladies and males are old men, that is the amateur wireless operators gender. So often we have more number of girls in our group than boys are and this is how the amateur activity. And I would like to end by saying that much more observational work on the field needs to be carried out, we need to be supported. And we will try and do that. I think I will end here. Thank you.
Thanks, Arvind. Okay, since we are running late, let me go to the last speaker. Uh Arvind, you can stop sharing your screen.
Yeah, I'll do that, I'll do that.
Yeah, so our fifth speaker is Shomak Raitchodri from Ayuka. And he is going to talk about the outreach sales in different institutions.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Aniket. Actually, I'm going to talk about something else. I I'll start with that. But I I um because the theme has been to do with the astronomy outreach that ASI has been doing. I thought I'd talk more about the activities that the ASI did for science outreach and popularization. Before the current P O E C took over. And so and the story that I have here, concentrate some somewhat on. Um on on something that you've been working on, Aniket, and and that's the Olympiad. So um I um as you know, um. Ayuka has a very important outreach activity as Arvind talked about, started nineteen nineties. Um in Sirana's name was mentioned, he was the person who put together, brought. Um not only outreach at Ayuka but also connected it with the amateur community in India. He passed away in ninety-six and that's when I took over at Ayuka, the charge of science operation. Uh with Arvind Paranjap as the main officer in charge. Um I I putting up some of these pictures to show how even in the early nineties, Ayuka was one of the unique institutes. To actually engage in activities with school, children, teachers as well as. Um as well as the general public. I put a picture of mine there, conducting the annual quiz from back from nineteen ninety-six. Because that is going to become important in the story later on. Uh right now, of course, the last in-person Science Day celebrations we had in Ayuka had twenty people attend Ayuka in a single day. So this kind of shows the the kind of demand that people have and and we have here on that day, for example, twenty twenty. People coming from as far as Orangobad and Nagpur coming to. So um so that is the the kind of stuff that we do, but today's story is not about Ayuka. Today's story is about ASI. And how ASI engaged in science operation activities all over the country in the nineteen nineties. And I must say that the current P O E C committee is doing a fantastic job, absolutely fantastic job all over the country and is notable all over the world. But the 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 kind of activity, this kind of activity was conceived so long ago. And ASI took part in it that then stopped for some reason and then was revived in the current P O E C in two thousand fourteen. So when Dr Kapahi was president in Ajit's talk you heard. In ninety-seven, the new committee that took over had Dr Kapahi as president and Deepankar Bhattacharya was the secretary. Among the councillors was Dr Kastirangan, very important as the past president. And I was part of that council along with Piyush Pandey, who was the director of the Calcutta Villaplanetaryum. They had a very important role in this whole story and and various others. So there in this particular and then of course, Dr Kapahi passed away very suddenly. In in ninety-nine at the age of fifty-five. But he had taken this amazing initiative and Dr Ram Sagar became the president and continued to support this activity. And with Dr Gopal Krishna as vice president, this is a question that Ajit had asked earlier. Um at this meeting in ninety-seven, the among the council, the very interesting thing, the first meeting of the council. Um Dr Kapahi said, we need um an activity in science population communication. I was as council member made in charge because as I showed you, Ayuka already had that kind of activity already ongoing. And it was considered that I I could, I I could continue that nationwide as generalize Ayuka's activities to ASI. That that was the reason I took over for a very brief period, the ASI's popularization activities. And while the initiatives that were taken was essentially to to generalize our work with the amateurs to all over India. For a for a couple of years, I was actually president of the Amateur Astronomy Association of India. Uh and the working with about a hundred amateur astronomy groups. The planetary community of India came, as Shalija mentioned earlier. Uh we visited various planetaryums and they came in 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 this activity, very interestingly, as I will say in a minute. Every meeting, council meeting, we had a science psych op report that had to be given and it was taken very, very seriously. Uh at that time, the MP committee had various people that was part in. So very interestingly, I I'm going to talk the rest, rest of it, talk about the Olympiad. Uh how the Indias and participation in the international Olympias as well as the national astronomy Olympiad in the country started. In ninety-seven, Colonel Singh was mentioned, amazing character, was an ASI member, but also a school teacher in in Lucknow. He sent, at that time, there was a Olympia that was held, the IAO in the ex USSR countries. And it, anybody could participate, but if the country did not participate, any city could participate or any school could participate. So he took his team from Lucknow to a team to to Moscow to participate in this in this Olympiad. And won a bronze. We heard of that and and in that meeting in the ASI, in the PRL meeting, it was mentioned. And it was mentioned in the general body meeting and and I think it's minuted that we should invite Colonel Singh. To figure out how we can help India participate in the international Olympiad. And Colonel Singh was then invited to the meeting, then the first meeting of the council and we worked with him. And the next year in Kiev, very wonderful context now where the war is going on. Um the the next Olympiad was held in ninety-eight and a joint Pune-Lucknow team was sent. And there, how how we did was, we took that that quiz thing I showed, the Ayuka. Uh Science Day Quiz, we selected people from the the quiz and activities. Lucknow gave, brought some of its best students, we took some of the best students, Varun Halidha was one of these students. And and we put them together and we had a two-week camp in Ayuka with these people training and we trained them. And then from ninety-nine and and then they, as I will, I'll show you, they went to Moscow and and sorry, to Kiev. And won amazing prizes and I'll tell you in a minute. So that encouraged us to have a national astronomy Olympiad. And this was held to twenty planetarians in the country, the question paper was prepared within association with Arvind Kumar at IPTA. And thirty students were chosen, they were trained at a camp at Kandala, paid for totally by the ASI. So this was an ASI activity and ASI paid for the travel and accommodation in Kandala, lovely place. And we had a three-week-long camp in which we trained these students, send them to the Olympiad. And from the following year at Nehru Science Centre, this training was started till. Uh later on in two thousand and four, HBCAC took over, right? Then the annual, the the camp was funded by the ASI, but we went to East Row and because Dr Kastirangan was was our council member. Uh ex-president as well as Deepankar Bhattacharya took an amazing initiative to go and secure this funds from East Row. From then on, every year except for one year, East Row funded the international travel of the Olympiad team. So this was a totally ASI initiative which became amazing. So this was the first one, ninety-eight, in which the Pune-Lucknow team went. And these were the kinds of questions they they had, amazing. And we realized when the team went that they had textbooks in school that that they read. So the team this year, which was led by Mayan Baya, brought back the book from which the local. Um a team trained. This book was then translated by Margarita Saphonova here in Ayuka. Um into English and later Priya Hassan also took part in this. And and so this entire book we translated, we use it in our training. So we tried to beat them at their game. That was the wonderful thing. And this is why the Indian team was so successful. Later on, my Aniket has compiled some of these questions into his book. Um which of course the HBCAC has been doing in an amazing way. Now, of course, there are two Olympiads. In ninety-nine, when the national team went after national Olympia training in in Kandala. Um to to, so this was the Kiev one, I'm sorry. And this was in Crimea and Kiev together. The politics, geopolitics is very interesting now. Um Varun and Mayank got gold medals and and and. Silver medals and bronze medals and 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 some of these pictures are on their website. I was looking for pictures. We don't have any pictures of the Kandala camp anymore. I don't know why, because we didn't have mobile phones, we didn't take pictures. And ninety-nine, the the it became a national story. You can see Jyotsna and Mayank went with the team to Kiev. And it was trained here, as I said, in 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 Kandala and they brought back two gold medals and several bronze and silvers. Um the newspapers were extremely happy about this and it was everywhere. And it was seen as a success of the ASI. The following year in Nishniarkis in two thousand. Where they would, this entire team, we then expanded, the training team was expanded, we spent a lot of time with these people. At the Nehru Centre in in Bombay, India came. India came, India got the highest number of medals and became champions. And you can see the four gold medals, sorry, three gold medals, and you can see the largest number of medals. This is the first time India was championing at an international astronomy Olympiad. And this was again funded by the B S I and Isro. So I just wanted to bring back these memories of of how the Olympiad took place. And that in there, the planetarys played a very, very important role because the regional tests were held at the planetarys all over the country. Some of these planetarys were led by very important people, Vishweshwara and then Shailaja in Bangalore, in Calcutta, Yush Pandey and then and then in Hyderabad, Siddharth, in Bombay, it was J D Rawal. And so all these people took their part in actually having these tests and the training is very, very important. I'll just talk about one more thing that the ASI got very involved in. At in nineteen ninety nine, UNESCO had a world conference of science in which a hundred and forty countries participated in Budapest and came up with these amazing resolutions that talked about the the scientist's responsibility, not only to to be honest and also make sure women came into science and things like that and and look at traditional science in various countries. But also, it said, any scientist, the main social responsibility is to make sure they communicate their work to the external the external community, the community at large, participatory science, very, very important. As a result, in London, there was a a national, international meet of science communicators. And very interestingly, British Council approached the ASI to send a representative to participate in. Not any other science, came to astronomy, because they thought that astronomy, actually, and this is a very interesting thing that you should think about. Science communication rests a lot on astronomers. So I was sent by the ASI and Ram Sagar was very, very I was fortunate to to be sponsored by President Ram Sagar to to go to this this meeting, in which I gave one of the keynote lectures. And there, for the first time, I met people from from South Africa who were doing this amazing work in the in the in the shanty towns as well as people from Europe, as well as all over the the world. And there we talked about, and the very interesting thing I found was that almost everybody was talking about the Kerala Science Movement. And here, you can see that even in my presentation, I talked about the work we did at Ayuka in terms of setting up a local science communication center. But also the national movements that we have and including things to do with the Kerala Science Movement and the Science Movement in Bangladesh. In 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 schools and things like that. And and this is, this is where I think is very important that the ASI participated in this international event. As and 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 you know, essentially into discussions into a lot of, with a lot of the the community. Now, I I wanted to bring this up for the following reason, I don't think this has been followed up. And as as the ASI, you can see, as is is going into a a need of internationalizing, taking the taking the outreach work all all over the all over the country. We now have a center for astronomy education between A P C A C and Ayuka here in India. A center for the I U for astronomy education. And I think it is very important that ASI members, they have a very important role in astronomy education in India. And and the fact that there is a global movement going on, on bringing astronomy to the people. It is very important for ASI members to individually take responsibility for for this. And I I just wanted to stop there and 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 see whether we have discussion on this, thank you.
Thanks. Actually, I had a comment and maybe any of the speakers can respond, not just for Shomak. But some names have been mentioned. We mentioned Professor Ishweshwara, we mentioned Ratnasri. According to my own memory, where I was a student in eighties, one of the biggest outreach effort, I would not say effort, but really, science was brought to homes through the Adusan serial called Turning Point. Which and in which some of the prominent ASI members were involved. Professor Ashpal was host, then Tarika was host for several episodes. So these people, then Professor Rajesh Kucher was briefly mentioned. In fact, we were talking to him as possibly as one of the speakers for this session and we lost him just few days back. So just my question to panelists is that these individual people who have done a lot of work. Why there wasn't a sustained follow-up to make it more widespread activity on with a with a help of ASI or some institutes? Yeah, maybe, I don't know, Arvind has his hand up and just, maybe we can start with you.
Okay, actually, my hand raised was to put the record correct. That New England School, Tilak Road in Pune is the first planetarym, not the Calcutta planetarym. Now, what you just asked this question is why there no continuous responses, that there were no particular person dedicated for it. Every every astronomer or scientist did it by their own interest. It is only after Ayuka started outreach activity and a separate person was employed for it. I think there took a different kind of a turn. But in the beginning, like the total solar eclipse, Indian Institute of Astrophysics brought out that bulletin. But during the ninety-five eclipse, there was a very interesting story and that is the Ayuka supported another booklet by J V P, which is the, which has been talked about as the oldest amateur astronomers association. It was night too soon and that booklet was very similar to I I A and again, it was distributed free of cost. But then there was a dedicated effort by small group of people like we were doing it. So I suppose that is the reason, because professional astronomers have something more to do other than giving public talks and all that.
I can respond, I'm just, you can hand up for comment, but I I thought, okay, is your comment on on my my presentation or for for this?
Shomak, I just had a comment and a request, essentially. You, I think, very correctly outlined the role of ASI in starting Indian participation in astronomy Olympiads. Colonel J E S led the effort, in fact, he organized quite a few things in Lucknow. And being in H R I Allahabad, I was able to go and participate in some of those programs. But what I wanted to add as a request was that the executive council at some stage had approved giving financial support. Not a large amount, but a token award to each of the people who are selected for the O C S C. And I think, given that we have given, the S I in the past has almost entirely funded the whole operation. This is a fairly small commitment and we should probably go and revisit that and honor that from now on.
Thanks very much, I mean, I I need to, I mean, the thing is, the the talk I gave, Desip is entirely from memory and asking a few people. I I do not have access to the the paperwork and the minutes of the ASI from that and maybe we, I should go and look at such things. And you would remember because you were secretary and then and of the ASI, what resolutions had been taken. I think we should request the current, the committee and the secretary to look at the history of, you know, the ASI's participation in the Olympiad and and figure out what commitments were made and we should actually certainly continue this, thanks.
So you you wanted to
I was just, I was, I I, the thing is that today's session was kind of patchy because we each picked up various aspects to talk about. The wonderful talks on the planetarym, on 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 individual activities and things like that. But what you raised is a very important question, I wish the the talks had, there was one talk on outreach done in general through the media. And this is why we didn't mention people like Professor Ashpal and Professor Nalika. I mean, Professor Nalika won the Kalinga Award for science preparation, not many people in India have have won this. And and it was because of his, this kind of activities nationwide and in the media. And I can say from myself that i- in the time when there was just the Dudasian channels and no other channels and when I was in school and college. Professor Ashpal and Professor Nalika's programs made huge impact on on us. And they were the only things that we could do. So I think this needs to be documented and and the and not many people know the the giants of popularization in the country in those days. This, of course, as you point out, in the media has not been taken up. We have Shahrukh Khan's dead talks, but the current TV channels do not absolutely pay any attention to science. And I don't know whether the ASI can can play a role in in bringing astronomy. As I said, astronomy is considered to be the motivator in science preparation. Not many people out there would understand about nanosciences, given in a popular manner. But astronomy is something that has popular appeal. And maybe the ASI could try and influence the media to to have more astronomy in the media.
Following what Shomak said, I wonder if there is ASI archive or if there is a time to actually start something like this. With the certain sections like outreach, but history and, I mean, achievements. But maybe this is something to 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 be taken up. ASI archive.
I think that is a very good idea, we we should have archives at some location where we, yeah, see her. I just, I agree with you.
Okay, so just responding, commenting on the point which Shomak discussed that, you know, current media doesn't show any particular interest in science. But we should also think about, and we have been doing a little bit of social media work, but we should also think about things which are popular with the younger generation. So for example, the National Public Radio in the US N P R has the economics podcast, right? And economics traditionally is extremely boring, but they started their own TikTok, you know, short clips which demonstrate economic concepts, why something is important, what are inflation cycles and so on, right? And there are YouTube channels like Minute Physics which describe things. We can do that with Instagram reels or whatever, I don't, I don't follow these trends, but we should, we probably should keep an eye out on what is, what, what media teenagers are consuming and we should reach out to them in the language that they understand. So it might make sense to, you know, do that, do that kind of a thing.
Yeah, that is a good idea and I think instead of we, in the wrong age group, trying to learn new things. We should collaborate with people like Cosmic Water Group to do this better. Yep, in the back there.
Yeah, so I have a very simple question, so when we talk of popularization, it's easy to popularize a common field, say for example, just neutron stars. So if I have to, but if I have to talk about my own very narrow PhD topic. And then if I have to popularize the theme of my PhD topic, that's a difficult challenge. So how do we learn that or if there is, and how do we contact someone who can, means who can tell us that this is how means? I know there is no steps as such, but I don't know, I feel, I feel it's very important that we 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 get, we we know how to make our own PhD topic itself.
Aniketh, I would like to say something about the archive which
Yeah, Arvind, can I just respond to what was raised just now?
Yeah, please.
So I just saw that, I think it is A C R B, they are kind of conducting some workshops for science communication. And then they also have this absurd things like that, and I think you people should be on the
Yes, we are, I'm aware of that, but then I'm talking about in the the training part, so
Exactly, yes, yeah, so I mean, this is one of the things that we do plan to have as a part of our activities. Which I think was mentioned by Divya from the capacity building, that we did think of this to have workshops. And probably we can look at, you know, roping in people from the D S T Media Center and Vikrant Prasad who can conduct workshops, this is a good thing.
Actually, just to add to that, within P O C also, we have been discussing some, not end up P O C, but some members. But probably, we have expertise within P O C to do such workshops, especially, we saw some of the people who are trying to, generally trying to make good effort to study for our comprenation, but they need some more guidance. So probably at some point, ASI can organize a science adding workshop.
Yeah, like Kanpama said, that is, I mean, so there are various aspirational goals which we have, which we don't necessarily know right now how to meet. But that is, those are desires. So it is in those desires that certainly listed that we do want to teach our members and especially younger members, good science communication skills. I just wanted to highlight Cosmic Partha once again, and I just wanted to say that if all of us who are writing papers, if you work with them to say that, okay, here is my paper, you find me somebody to summarize it, they don't like you to summarize your own paper. They want somebody else to summarize your paper and you volunteer for them to summarize somebody else's paper. Without that, it won't work, right? So you do that and that tells you how to write about something in a manner which is sufficiently non-technical, that somebody else would understand that. That's one point, another point I wanted to make is that we've managed to get some traction with some Oringya radio stations. And if we can produce content with for them, they are also willing to get it translated to various other languages and spreads. So that is one channel where we might be able to do something.
We, before you, I just want to go back to Arvind, Arvind, you had a comment about archives.
That is correct, before, when this particular session was announced, we also thought that we will not be able to cover entire outreach. And so we thought that we could, just like Priya had done it, we could keep a Google page and people can give their submission in the group page and then finally we can compile that, so that was one thing. And this, I don't know who said that my PhD work, but my personal experience is that every time at Ayuka, whenever I have given press release, they printed verbatim, I think I had certain experience in writing this press notes. So if you send me your gist of your PhD thesis or whatever you would like to get into the paper, send it to me, I have a column which is running. I will add into that and give you with your name, etc., that's it, thank you.
He would like to respond, yeah.
Actually, it's not about the press release as such, so if I have to even talk to my fellow colleague from other feed, I have to go back to where where all it starts, like the stellar debts and then and then go to the problem. So I can talk about neutron stars and I can popularize neutron stars, but if I have to go to the specific problem, then it becomes very difficult, at least for me.
Tell me the story, I will help you out.
Okay, yeah, thank you, I'll continue then, thank you.
Yeah, so I was, I was thinking of the practical aspects of P O C moving forward. So in the nation, we have multiple astronomy institutes, which have now somewhat mature outreach programs and offices. Which have their own resources, which have their own funding, which are not insignificant. When we come to ASI P O C, we have a very wide reach to all the institutions. We can leverage the expertise from across institutions, but the P O C does not have enough resources in terms of an office or funding. In many ways, moving forward to implement many of the ideas which have been thrown out today and which we have been mulling over for a long time. Implies that ASI P O C has to work hand in hand with established organizations which have outreach, offices like Ayuka, I A A, now A S. I I at least am aware of two directors sitting here, one one is here next to me, Deepanka, there is one Shomak out there online. What are your perspectives on this? If the ASI P O C wants to be ambitious, blow up astronomy education and outreach in the country. Would you be able to access the resources that you have, would you have you with us, can we do this together? Shomak, would you like to respond to that?
Certainly responsible, of course, and that is the entire mission and in Ayuka, I can tell you my my experience, but Certainly responsible, of course. And that is the entire mission. And in Ayuka, I can tell you my my experience, but of course, the other directors can see other things. That is the direction in which we are going. We know that we have a network of two hundred associates all over the country. A lot of them have the potential of doing outreach in regional, in region around them. Some of them do an amazing amount of work. The hand is up from Joe Jacob, who can talk about, he's one of our associate, who's done amazing outreach in his in his region in Kerala. And and to just involve many of our associates into doing the kind of stuff and then to replicate some of the stuff that we've had done in here and then and then also learn from them what they're doing in their in their regions. Neeraj in at the I A A started a lot of work in regional languages and things like that. Many of these, as I, as I said in my presentation, you see, I mean, Ayuka, our population started first and then we could translate some of that into the A S I activities for the couple of years that I was in charge in terms of doing it all over the country. You can take already some of the good practices that have happened in the institution institutions in science popularization and outreach work and see whether some of these can become, can be done on the A S I platform. It doesn't matter who does it. But there are some things that they will be able to do better than the individual institutions who work in their own surroundings.
Thanks, Deepak. Yeah, just to add what Shomak has said. You're absolutely right. So individual institutions, you know, we can do a limited amount of things. So it will be very important to coordinate all the institutional activities and also we'll go one more step with the G M person with this result which we, so this is, we are not doing it. In fact, incidentally, not many people, we are probably you are aware, Dr. Akita from the G M Media Cell, I actually invited her to attend this A S I and she was here for last two days. Incidentally, she identified three undergraduate students for this workshop which you are referring to. She has already invited them to Delhi for training them this purpose. So she was mentioning that this is, they are very much interested to do that. And catch them young, you know, you have to, and she clearly told that, you know, senior astrophysicists or astronomers, not all of them are good orators. They can't do outreach. So we have to know our limitations. So individual institutions, resources, including Manushali, in fact, I'm happy that Virindra is here. He has been, I mean, this position we created for outreach. And he's also given a designation in the scientist, scientist, you know, cattle, so that he can move with his career as well. It's not, this is also, these are important elements. Sometimes, you know, people are hired, actually, Ajit pointed this out earlier as well. People are hired as scientific officer and they get saturated. So I I think these are again technical issues which we have to address and which is possible. If you have a, you know, qualified person like him, he should be also able to progress in his career, just not, you know, identified as a separate outreach person. As a genuine scientist person, because he's also doing full-time work for the scientific community. So these are the sound efforts, I think, we have to be carefully policy-wise, we have to do, we have to connect with the other, you know, resources. In fact, I probably point this out, Shomak rightly pointed out. Deepanka, but it's at that point of time, I took down majority of the amount of money what we have today was actually gathered at that point of time. They got lots of money from sponsors in different industry partners and so on. So then, of course, Dr. Katsikasirangan was there also and he helped quite a bit. So I see the large amount of money and we have not been able to do that subsequently. So of course, there are other challenges for for this, but unless we connect with bigger, you know, organizations. And Ajit, I think today pointed out rightly to bigger industry partners initiating prize awards and things like that. We'll not be able to, you know, address the fund issues, but it is important to work together. And P O C now currently what I see is already having the major players from all the individual institutions as well.
Okay, we have three or four hands up, or two, your hand is up for a long time, so you can.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Aniket. I just, I, my hand was raised at the time when one of the participants were mentioning to or he was asking about how to start with popularization. Then I just thought of suggesting to him, like the the language and the story development in the case of astronomy picture of the day. As well as the astronomy picture of the month done by Neeraj, maybe, maybe a guidance for him. How to start with developing the ideas, how to start it and from the very beginning and progress and give a picture, a full picture in the in a language which is understandable to anybody. So that was the point which I just wanted to mention over there. And since Shomuk did say, did say about some of the activities which we conduct in the region, I just take one minute to say one of the, about the one of the educational activities which we started with during the time of the pandemic. At the time, there was a lot of, lot of difficulty.
Uh, joke, if, if you can just type your message in the chat, it will be better because we have several more comments.
Okay, well, no problem, no problem. I I also, this is not something which needed to be told since Shomak mentioned only, I just wanted to tell. Okay, I'll type it. Okay, fine. Thank you, Aniket.
Thanks. Aravinda.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have two short and to the point comment. One thing is research institutes in this, research and education in university and outreach from planetary. This should be connected by one simple step that will create a small section of notice board. In every planetary, they communicate something from the research institute. So that public actually come to know updated information from the research institute, what is astronomy happening from India astronomy. This is one point. I tried, but I have not succeeded really. Second thing is second thing is, what is that? Outreach related, short outreach. The research institute director, if they want to really think, we have not actually appointed people, that is wrong. We have started appointing people for outreach, but what we have not focused yet is people with right technical skill. So probably science animation that can create beautiful pictures, beautiful animation. If that we can do, then only it will reach masses. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Tell two more comments, one from back there. Oh, hi. So this is kind of a tangent and harking back to something which Professor Hassan said earlier in her talk. So I am a student which actually benefited from some of her work and she might not know about this, but so our college started a course in astrophysics, a master's course in astrophysics like three years ago when I was in the first batch of that course. And our college had just a couple of professors who could teach astrophysics at that time. And at that time, Professor Hassan's videos online, which had really good Python tutorials on basics of astrophysics and how to use Astro Py, how to use I R F and tutorials like that were extremely useful. And because they were like, it was like democratizing tools which say, say students from research institutes had to us because we did not have as master's students in small colleges, the resources to say, say networks like say older PhD students or older seniors who could teach us those techniques. And Priya Hassan's videos online were incredibly useful. So if she's still around, I'd like to like perhaps prompt her to elaborate on what her idea of disseminating those videos were because right now, I I can tell you for a fact that about sixty students in my program so far have benefited from your tutorials, especially on Astro Py. Priya, can you give a very short reply?
Yeah, so basically, I forgot your name. What's your name?
Amneel.
Okay, so Neil, so obviously, like you understood, the purpose was to teach tools to students who do not know it, because if they learn the tool, then they can, you know, run the software and do the stuff. So that was the basic idea, so that people just learn the software and they can use it. Yeah.
Thanks. Last.
Because all there, even now people can access them and watch the videos and learn.
Yeah. Thank you, Priya. Yeah.
Hi, we just, we at R R I just organized the Science Day and it was, there was huge response and everybody wants to be an astronomer. So my question, my question was that even when you have the best intentions in mind, the motivations are not clear, like, do you want all amateur astronomers to be professional astronomers? Do you want everyone to do PhD in astronomy? Do you have those kinds of seeds? So we all know that so many people I do PhD in astronomy, but they don't find any postdoc, they they are not able to pursue it, very minuscule percentage goes goes ahead. So so do you want to encourage everyone? Do we have those kind of prospects? So we are telling about that, yes, this is a very interesting field, but it also has to look, has to have those kind of future prospects that you want such a large number to be doing PhD, to be, to be, so yeah, yeah. So that was my main point, that motivation sometimes is not clear, even when you have the best intentions that astronomy, for example, I love astronomy and many, I know many people do that, but what what to do about it?
Yeah, let me take everybody and answer on behalf of speakers. So obviously, what you are saying is true. Every program you go, there will be three hundred students and all of them will get excited about astronomy and in no realistic sense, you you really reach a scale where everybody will get a job as a professional astronomer. But astronomy should not be seen as in isolation. Astronomy is a vehicle to attract people towards science. So after getting excited about science, they may actually end up working in some physics or even chemistry or biology, it doesn't matter. Astronomy is something which kids are naturally curious about. So by that curiosity, you get a hook to science. This is first thing. Second thing, it is not even for, given the scale of India, you will not even find enough jobs for each and every kid who is excited about in in all sciences together. But if you can teach how astronomy works, how we think as astronomers, as scientists, that scientific thinking which we we teach the kids, that will be useful for them, even if they don't take a job in science. So we, if by teaching them about astronomy, we tell indirectly, send a message to stay away from astrology that itself is a big deal. Yeah, we don't want to.
Can I answer?
Can I just add a little bit to what Aniket said and also to support her point? I think there is some validity in what she says in sense that you know, every year we we churn out some number of PhD students out of which something like maybe ten percent to fifteen percent eventually would manage to get a permanent job back in India if they wished, right? And this is an issue that I had brought out, I think, I don't know, Anupam, remember, she is here. Few years back in the E C that the Astronomy Society of India should do much more effective advocacy for hiring astronomical astronomy faculties in other institutes, new institutions like I T and I S S, which the A S I has not done. And I think this is a major failure on part of the A S I. I'm sorry to say this in a forum sitting in A S I. But I strongly believe that. And I think this is something that we have to start, we have to years of directors of various general big institutions which employ five hundred faculty, six hundred faculty, not small as two institutes, right? That is where the future is. We need to work and effectively advocate for astronomy with them. This is fundamentally important.
Yeah, I I wanted to answer the question by Ananda that the planetary room should be doing something for the science that is science research that are produced from India. Fortunately for me, I had easy access to Indian Institute of Astrophysics, so I could get visuals and display them as posters immediately. But what we need today is exactly the opposite. Namely, we want beautiful videos. If videos are made available to us, we have a small five-minute capsule which we show just before the main program where we showcase the highlights. For example, when hundred and five satellites were launched from Isro, we made a nice program of that and that was very well appreciated. So similar things, we need input from the research institutes and they should be quick in supplying these high-quality videos. The videos will have to be really high quality. And only when they are made available, we will be able to showcase them in the planetary rooms. That is very important. And I think all the research institutes, please note this and make it a point to supply they needed videos to the nearest planetary room so that it can be displayed there. Thank you.
Thanks, Divya.
Thanks. So I wanted to respond to what you said a bit earlier. So it's along the lines of what Aniket said, that the idea is to sort of spread scientific temper and get them excited. And once you're excited, you will find your way. We are not really trying to say that you come to astronomy and we promise you a job. I also take the point which the game we just made about advocacy at various institutions. But I think there will never be a time where all the people who do PhDs in astronomy will find jobs in astronomy. The other thing, equally important thing which we have to do is to make sure that our training as well as our people are well aware for avenues for astronomy PhDs outside astronomy. That's the beginning which we are just making now with our academy, industry, academic academia and industry interaction thing. But I think the bulk of the PhDs would actually go there. And talking to my friends who are, who did PhDs in astronomy but are now not in astronomy. These guys are very highly regarded in their respective institutions. They are regarded as problem solvers. When the organization doesn't know what to do, these are the people they go to. So I think those opportunities we have to create and that mindset we have to create that you're a smart guy. You can do whatever problem comes to you.
Yeah, I think we will end with Deepak's comment and others. Okay, okay, just one line. All lines of participants.
On the same line as Ajit also mentioned in his talk that the big data science problem, for example, is not just for astronomy, it's for the whole science community and the industry as well. And that the no data set is as large as astronomy data and you learn actually a lot of skills in that. So that skill development is what that's one example that I could think of immediately.
Okay, thanks. By the way, there is a few lines.
I would, I would add because both of them have said, both of them have said more or less what I wanted to say in terms of the industry readiness of our PhD students, because this is the criticism which we are getting from the, from the government is your PhD students are not industry ready. Because seventy-five percent of the students from the UK community in astronomy goes into industry. We have to reduce that probably number of years of PhD and make this skill set more flexible for teaching positions for, you know, industry positions and all that. Just to add, because what you were saying about, you know, A S I is not participating in sort of pushing expansion in other institutes or other positions across. We are doing our individual basis. I've been sitting in a lot of interviews, I've managed a couple of positions and I'm sure other E C members also doing that. So it's happening. That's how you see people in I T's and I G's I S R's getting positions. So it's happening, but as an institution, I don't think A S I can do that. Okay, I think. But as the awareness can be brought in, awareness can be brought in so that the members of the senior A S I's can actively play a role.
Okay, thanks. With that, I think we should end the session. Let's thank all the speakers again. Sidh, what can you say something?
Only one sentence that it's a chicken.